Good evening and welcome to the Planning Board meeting of Tuesday, January 2, 2024. Probably be the only time I get that right during the whole meeting. Prior to opening the meeting, I'd like to just say, after our last meeting, Jimmy Griffith, longtime member of the Planning Board, passed away. Jimmy, at the time, was the longest-serving person in the town of Milford. He had served this board, I believe, some over 30 years. I believe it was 37, but I'm not positive of that. But I know when I sat on that side of the table, Jimmy was a member of the board back in the late 80s, and he stayed on for quite a few years. And he also was a town meeting member for all the years that I've been a town meeting member, and he served on numerous committees in town. And I just wanted to send our condolences to his wife and the Griffith family, and certainly it's someone that the town of Milford will certainly miss. So we'd be remiss if we weren't remembering Jimmy tonight. With that, I'll open up the meeting and have a motion for the minutes from our last meeting, which was 12:12:23.
Make a motion.
Motion by Babe to approve, to accept the minutes from our meeting of 12:12:23. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Joe. Any further discussion? Hearing not, all those will signify by saying aye in favor.
Aye.
Those opposed, unanimous at four. I signed it. We have no 81Ps tonight. We have a continued amended site plan for 13 Spruce Street. Andre Rizindi. So we've had this. Come on. This has come before us a few times. I believe we had a few questions, a few remaining questions that we needed answered and some changes. And do you have those plans?
Yes. By the way, my name is Elliot Petros over there, so I'm a judge. Andre couldn't make it tonight. He asked me to come.
Yep.
So I printed up a couple of full sheets for you guys. He asked me to do that.
Yep. If you could just go over the changes that were made since our last meeting.
What we did was we extended the landscape area to the end of the handicap parking space, and we also added some spot grades and changed one contour.
Mm-hmm.
That's pretty much it.
There was some, okay, so you do have the, I think the other thing was the light in that location.
Yeah.
Liz and Larry, have you had a chance to review the plans?
Yep. That was by the ball grading, and it was the primary. And he upgraded the details, too. They're just second page.
Yep.
So I am happy with everything.
Okay.
Yep, should be ready to go.
Any questions from members of the board?
This time.
With that, I will entertain a motion to approve the amended site plan or to not approve, depending on the flavor of the board.
I'll have a motion. Submit a motion to approve the amended site plan for 13 Spruce Street.
Motion by Chris to approve the amended site plan. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Joe. Any further discussions?
Yeah, I just got one question.
Sure.
In the notes that we put down about the landscape going down to and getting rid of all the concrete and everything.
The detail showed.
Okay. Thought the detail sheet, the second sheet.
Yeah, the detail showed down two feet from grade.
Okay. That was.
Did you check the plantings, by the way, Liz? Are they all small plantings in that area? We talked about that because I was afraid of site.
It's all just shrubs.
Okay. Yeah, because I don't, in that location, it'll cause more of a problem if we have things sticking up.
Yep.
Any other, any other questions? Hearing not, all those in favor of approving the amended site plan will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous at four. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
Same for you. Next thing on the docket is ZBA variance special permit. Read Larry's letter. "The applicant requests a variance and special permit to allow for the establishment of a supplemental suite within a proposed addition to the existing single-family dwelling. Supplemental suites are provided for a special permit under the standards of ZBL Section 319. The proposed addition will encroach into the required side yard, hence the variance request." Just for clarification, this is for 8 Harvard Drive, which is MAP 36, Block 16, Lot 450. It's in the RB zone. Creation of the supplemental suite will be accomplished with an 18-by-34 addition and interior alterations to the existing house and will consist of one bedroom, a bathroom, a laundry room, and a combined kitchen, dining, living area as shown on the floor plans that were dated 9/27/23. The floor area of the supplemental apartment will be approximately 600 square feet, under the 720 square feet allowed for under the provision. The occupant will be a parent of the owner, as attested to in the attached affidavit. The proposed addition is to replace the existing deck, which currently encroaches three feet into the required side yard, with the 19-by-34 addition, which will encroach 2.9 feet into the side yard setback." Larry's recommendation is to send a favorable to the ZBA. Any questions from members of the board?
No, it seems even the width of the addition seems very reasonable and.
Yeah, I thought this one at least fit in, you know.
Yeah.
So, and the fact that it is no bigger than the existing deck that's out there in terms of the encroachment, I thought it met the requirements of the bylaw. Anything, Joe?
No. No questions here.
Pleasure of the board. Send a favorable, we need a motion to either send a favorable or unfavorable to the ZBA.
A motion to send a favorable recommendation to the ZBA.
Motion by Chris to send a favorable recommendation to the ZBA.
I'll second.
Seconded by Babe. Any further discussion? Hearing not, all those will, all those in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous at four. Another ZBA special permit, Guerrero Realty, Inc., 108 East Main Street, 3 Cedar Street. Lot, this is MAP 42, Lot 260 and 261. This is in the CB zone. We've had this one before us for other reasons, as Larry will point out. "The applicant was previously granted special permits by the ZBA in 2022 to allow for a rental car business on the subject properties. 106 East Main Street was a site of the former Gibbs Gas Station, and the separate adjacent lot at 3 Cedar Street contains a non-conforming three-family dwelling. The auto-related use required a special permit from the ZBA, and the changes relating to the non-conforming triplex required a special permit as well. The applicant now seeks to establish an auto glass replacement business on the property in lieu of the previously approved rental car operation. The approvals relating to the three-family dwelling remain unaffected with this current proposal. This proposal is to authorize the auto glass operation while retaining the use of the two properties as one site is previously approved. The two old driveways on Cedar Street have been closed, the existing driveway for the triplex on Cedar Street has been widened, and the width of the remaining driveway on East Main Street has been reduced. The triplex and its associated off-street parking have been retained. Alterations proposed to the site with this application are limited to pavement striping. Landscaping is being provided within the area that would be necessary for any future reconfiguration of the East Main and Cedar Street intersection, in addition to two parcels who are to be formally merged into one lot. Larry recommends a favorable forward to the ZBA, subject to, subject to the conditions of the original permit remaining in effect and subject to final site plan approval by the Planning Board." So this is the one that we had seen before. It's really a change of use from what was previously done. I don't know if the members have been down by there, but they have done quite a bit of work down there. You can see the, the curbing has gone in. It outlines the area between what the widening for 109 would be if the town ever does a widening down at that, that intersection, I should say, 16 and 85 intersection. So that's already been completed. The site does look a lot better than it used to. I don't, I mean personally, I don't see a, I probably like a auto glass in lieu of a used car dealership, but.
I think you'd be less traffic, less traffic, less vehicles parked.
Well, the less parking, I mean, that's the thing, that no matter what you have with used car dealerships, it seems like the cars get parked every which way and not like they're shown on the plan. So I think there'll at least be less of that. And in that location, I think that that's actually an improvement, but that's my feelings on it. So I didn't have any issues with it.
They'll be coming back to you for site plan amendment again anyway, so.
Yep. Any other questions, comments from the board? Hearing not, I'll entertain a motion to send a favorable to the ZBA.
Go ahead, Joe.
I'll make a motion to send a favorable to the ZBA.
Motion by, motion by Joe to send a favorable recommendation on the special permit to the ZBA. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Chris. Any further discussion? Hearing not, all those in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that's unanimous at four. Next thing on the agenda was Comprehensive Plan Status Report. We do have signed contracts, gentlemen. So MAPC is now under contract. We do have a kickoff meeting with myself and Larry scheduled for, is it next week, Larry, or this week?
Yeah, no, next Tuesday. I think it's 12:30. They're gonna do a Zoom.
A Zoom meeting.
Yeah.
Again, with everything running around today, I didn't have a chance to check my calendar to see where it is, but I know it is in my calendar.
Yeah, it's next, next Tuesday.
So that will be the kickoff for it. After that, we will start getting into, you know, we'll have a better idea as to how they want to move forward and who they're gonna talk to first or not. Obviously, members of this board will be highly involved, and we'll go from there as to input from other committees and boards in the town of Milford. But we're, I think we, we had hoped to get it done by the end of the year, but they've indicated that they think, I believe, the end of March of next year would probably be a more logical date with, you know, trying to schedule all the meetings, make sure that the town has adequate time to have proper input into it. And, you know, we have, we make sure that the people that want to or need to provide input are available to them to express their concerns and wishes. So that's what it looks like in terms of a schedule, but at least we, we are moving forward.
We've gone 20 years, a couple, three months.
Yeah. Yeah. It was, that's sort of what, you know, when Larry and I were talking about it, we were talking about the dates and stuff, and I think Town Council and the town would have wanted it, just, just because ending at the end of the year would have been nice and all, but, you know, when they talked to us, I told Larry I didn't have any issue with it. I mean, I was more worried about making sure that we get it done right than, than trying to get it done by the end of the year.
Yeah, it's memorialized in the contract, March 31, '25, so. You guys may want to formalize which three of the four of you, at least four of you now, eventually there'll be five, but since this is all starting, you may want to formalize which three are gonna be the subcommittee members.
Yeah, there is, there are three. I mean, to be totally honest, just so everybody's aware, the last time we did, we did this, we tended to revolve it around Planning Board meetings. So although we had members on, the Planning Board members were actively involved throughout the process, even if they weren't on the committee, but the way the committee, the Comprehensive Plan Committee is set up, we indicated that there were three members from the Planning Board that would be on the committee along with other town staff. So we do need to set up those three members as to who, who the name of the members will be, but that certainly doesn't exclude anybody. I think all the members will be actively involved as much as they, they want to be involved.
Yeah, and I think the last time, the benefit of having three members, three Planning Board members, is that it's more likely that at least one Planning Board member will be at every subcommittee meeting. Not that all three of you would have to be, but.
Right.
It's pretty likely that at least one of the three would be, so.
Which, us being the lead board on it, was one of the reasons why we had, there is no other board that has multiple members, the way we set it up, but that was one of the reasons why the Planning Board does have three members, is to make sure that through continuity, we, we would always have some member, we should have some member that's attending all of the meetings.
Right.
So I don't know if you guys want to do that tonight, want to think about it. I mean, obviously, we have, we do have, we do have a little bit of time. We, you know, I don't expect anything earth-shattering to happen between the meeting on Tuesday and our next meeting, which is the Tuesday after, but.
No. And hopefully, by next ConCom meeting, we'll know which ConCom member is on, if they remember to do it.
Yep.
And we know that Matt Kelly's the Select Board rep, so, and I still haven't heard back from the FinCom, but I'll keep bugging them, so.
Yeah. I mean, those, it would be good to, hopefully, we get somebody that's, that would like to be actively involved, especially as it relates to the FinCom, because I think that's important, but I don't, I don't recollect the last time we went through this, how active they were, but hopefully that that's.
Yeah, wasn't Chuck?
Wasn't Chuck? It might have been.
I think, yeah, he was on then, too. But anyway.
Yep.
Yeah, so we just do that next time. That's all right.
Frequency of the meetings?
They're, do you remember what we did the last time, Larry, what the frequency was? I mean, there wasn't.
Well, in several cases, it was just an agenda item on a regular Planning Board meeting agenda.
Yeah.
And then other times, like, one of the things they want to do is have a, an immersion day, as they call it, as like everybody's gonna get baptized or something, but they want to have all the department heads show up, and they go through their dog and pony show, so that'd be a daytime thing. I think the last time, we did a session in the morning, and then they repeated the session in the afternoon for those departments. They could only make one time or the other. So, you know, that's kind of a special case, but other than that, they're, they would probably have at least a meeting a month of the subcommittee or at least a subcommittee member, depending upon what it is they're up to. But the staff that's on board now, obviously, is different than the way the staff was divvied up before with a bunch of grad students from UMass Amherst and MAPC staff, so it's primarily UMass Amherst that was doing it then.
I mean, I don't, I can't envision that outside of our Planning Board meetings, that you're talking about, you know, more than three or four meetings, that they may want us to go with something, but I think most of them will revolve around our Planning Board meetings to begin with.
Yeah.
So I, I don't see the position as being a huge time, time consumption outside of what we already, already do.
Like you said.
There could be a few where they, you know, I mean, it may be appropriate just because it's important enough for school committee that they have school committee meeting, and we, and they want to go to that meeting, and somebody from the Planning Board maybe would, would want to go, in which case you may already be there, but that's a different story. But anyways, you know, there may be those types of things, but I don't see there being a, you know, where they're going to be asking the Planning Board to attend a whole bunch of meetings out of our normal ones.
Sounds good. Thank you.
And I could see the consultants wanting to schedule an appointment on somebody, some other board's agenda and go and do whatever they're gonna do there.
Right.
But that wouldn't necessarily require even a subcommittee member to be there.
Right.
So it's, yeah, it's not an exclusive kind of thing, so. The other thing I added in the packet, I went back through the old implementation schedule again for the 2003 plan and further updated it to indicate all of the things that have been accomplished since then. So it's quite a bit, actually, so not, not any community, I, I think, would be able to say that there's that high a percentage. I didn't calculate the percentage, but it's pretty good in terms of implementing what the added plan had recommended, so.
Yeah, and I mean, some of these, we didn't do, we knew we weren't gonna do when, the day they were published. I mean, it was, it was their recommendation, but we knew there was no support in the town of Milford to do it, nor did we feel, in a lot of cases, that there was a strong reason to do it.
Or like not issuing, not allowing changes in nonconformities, which you can't not do.
Yeah.
So anyway, yeah.
Yeah, that's good, Larry. I mean, you know, obviously, this was one of the questions when we sat through FinCom as to.
Yeah. So this is updated even since then.
Yeah.
So we'll give, we'll send another copy to FinCom just to keep them up to speed.
Yep. So I don't know, you guys want to, do you want to set up the, now, do you guys want to think about it, as to whether you'd want to sit on that committee or not? We can certainly do it at the next meeting. We can put it on the agenda for the next meeting if you'd like.
Yeah.
Why don't you put that as an item on the next agenda, Larry, and we'll, we'll make that decision then.
Sounds good.
All right. Add a couple other attachments there, other than the holiday schedule. I'd done a couple of drafts, future amendments, maybe, to the bylaw. I took Babe up on his request, because actually, I did have spare time over the holidays. So, you know, while I was sitting at home, between loads of laundry, you know, I didn't vacuum, I did this. So I came up with an article to include brew pubs as accessory use and define them in a way where they're clearly a limited type of use, artisanal brewery versus a full-grown brewery that's clearly an industrial use and would require much larger spaces that are even available in the downtown zone. But in this, in this draft, I showed the brew pub as an accessory use in all three commercial zones and all three industrial zones. And since right now, manufacturing and processing industrial uses are actually allowed in the CC commercial zone by special permit of the ZBA, just to stay consistent, I.
Okay.
Added this as a ZBA special permit.
Special permit, yeah.
In the CA and the CB. I had a number of different definitions from, from different communities that APA had been collecting over the years, so this is kind of a combination of all of those things, trying to fashion it to make sense for Milford generally and for the downtown, especially in the CA zone, so.
Yeah, I was wondering where you had gotten the numbers. I would assume that's where it came from, was, was from those types of things, in terms of the number of barrels and.
Yeah, I think that one.
Level of floor area.
Yeah, I think that one was from Vail, Vail, Colorado. But again, that's, that doesn't necessarily need to be in there, or it can be changed if you keep it. The percentage floor area can be changed, but that was my shot at it, trying to, trying to get terminology that's easy to understand and is not gonna get confused with something else, so.
Larry, I think you did a fantastic job on it. Very good. The only, the only question, it's not a question, it's a thing, the 1,500 barrels.
Oh, yeah.
I was kind of figuring it out. For a brewery, it's too little. For a winery and a distillery, it's too much. And I was just trying to figure out how we could do it without making a definition that's as long as.
Why you wouldn't do.
I'm wondering if we need it.
I don't know that you'd even need it.
I'm wondering if we, if we do it based on, I mean, how big can somebody be if you limit it to, you can only have a working space of 30%, or maybe that's wrong, maybe it's 35%. But if you limit your space to that, how much can they actually brew out there anyways?
Well, the other half of that is that it's preparing those beverages intended for the direct consumption of their patrons.
Right.
In the restaurant.
Yeah.
Not to be sold to somebody else down the street, not to be sold at retail outlets, because that's another whole licensing thing with the state, anyway.
The thing is, sending it down, selling it down the street is part of their business to, to make it profitable, because if you try to brew it and sell it, but if you look at like beer, if you, I was looking at the, kind of divided and had the gallons and the, I had it down to cases of beer. It's not that many.
Yeah.
And even if you did it, it's only a small six-wheel truck at the most that's ever gonna go out of there, and it's not that often. That's why I kind of said that the 1,500 is a little, is a little low on the brewery part. Now, 1,500 gallons of wine is gonna take up more than 30% of the.
The other thing I wondered, and I'm not sure whether they can do it or not, and what the permitting would be, but, you know, obviously, this is for direct consumption, you know, I, I know they, they like to send it out elsewhere, but I was thinking, at a minimum, it would be good if they could sell their beer out of a visi cooler in the establishment, you know, people, people buy it there and then they walk out with it, but that's the only place, that's the only place you could buy it or get it, that you couldn't, you know, they, they don't have the right to, to sell it to liquor stores and market it outside, that at least you could, if you liked it, you could bring it home.
Yeah, it seems, yeah, first of all, that would require a different type of a license.
That's what I thought, you know, I'm thinking.
And Florida would be all set, in Massachusetts, it's not. But it's not that the, even selling in the package stores is, I think, they sell it to, like Craft Roots sells so many type of beers and, like Trail, Trail Rail, they have so many, they have Craft Roots beer there, they got this one there. And again, if even, now they make the kegs, the smaller type kegs, because they don't, so it's not a transportation. The biggest thing I was worried about in the, in the thing, and being in the CA and the CB district, was trucking.
Mm-hmm.
And then, as I was figuring out how many and what, even if they're making it in cases of 12-ounce cans.
Yeah.
It is hardly any.
And I guess, to that point, though, the product, you know, there's product that has to be brought in to brew, to create the product.
Right.
So I guess from that, from that thought process, is there any concern, though, that a larger vehicle is going to be needing to bring in the, the ingredients to make whatever the product is?
No, because they, for what they do at the brewery, they have the hop in store that will last so many brewers, it takes so long to brew it, and they can't store it that long because it's not fresh, any longer fresh. I did a lot of work at Collin Brewery, so I kind of seen how, you know, that's a massive, that was a massive brewery, and.
Yeah, my, my only concern is just the ingredients and how that, how those ingredients are, are brought onto the premise.
Yeah, I think those, those ingredients are probably actually a lot smaller than you think, because the biggest ingredient is the water.
Yeah. Yeah. That was one of my major concerns, is the water consumption.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, and obviously, I mean, as part of it, they'd have to go to the water company and say they can supply it, so.
Yes.
I mean, this doesn't, this, this doesn't open it up any more than, it just, it allows it, but they still have to go through the process.
Again, I kind of thought of it all the way, I thought of the transportation. And the biggest concern I had with the CB and the CA district was truck traffic.
Yeah.
Correct.
Especially the CA.
And as I did it, so, I don't see, I, the 1,500 gallons, as far as a brew, a brewing thing, I think is way too, too small. As far as the other ones, they're older size, so.
Well, it may not.
It's just something we can think about. We got plenty of time, and you, you did a, again, you got a draft here that's nice. I mean, it's very, very good.
Thanks. Well, the mechanics of it, one of the reasons I wanted to set it up this way is that whoever's doing the special permit, whichever board it is, you can still add a footnote, the way the, the way the bylaw is physically put together, you can add a footnote in any of those commercial zones, certainly, to, to each one of those As, designating the special permit, and create a new subsection that has specific criteria that deals with, you know, the, the volumes per type of brewery.
Okay.
So, so you can, you can add to this and fine-tune it. I guess, for me, one of the things that I was, was thinking through, and I know Liz had to listen to me complain about it, was, was the building code requirements. You know, this ain't gonna be a simple. You know, this ain't gonna be a simple thing.
No.
This is analogous to putting residential uses upstairs in the CA zone, because most of the places aren't gonna want to spend the money to meet the code.
Right.
To meet the code requirements, the buildings, for this, the building's gonna have to be sprinkled, probably, and then just physically, there aren't that many buildings that lend themselves to having the higher ceiling height for the brewery portion of the operation anyway. Rail trail is, but they've already spent so much that I don't think they're gonna want to tear that up. But nonetheless, that would have been, if it were otherwise vacant, would have been a perfect place for this kind of an operation. But at any rate, at least that gives you a framework to, to start working with.
Do you think, before we have the public hearing, and set it up on the agenda sometime, to work with John Erickson and have him come in and with a discussion with, with the planning board?
Yeah, I figured we could do this and, and see where it went, and then give John a copy of where we are so far, and, you know, get him involved at some point.
Yeah.
Definitely, especially before the public hearing, yeah.
Yeah. Again, I think the special permit should be with the planning board, because.
Well, but to do that, I mean, that's not impossible, but that means that there's gonna be another layer of amendments to change the chart, because right now, all the other manufacturing is ZBA special permit in the CA zone. So I don't know that you want to have special permits review for all the manufacturing uses in the CA zone. I mean, the planning board can do that, it's not like you're, you know, not competent to do that. So that would be my suggestion, is if you're gonna go that route, just be aware that we make that other amendment, so that those manufacturing uses in the C, C-zone are special permit by the planning board as well. So that's just another paragraph to the text.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, we've gone through this before, Babe, I sort of, you know, I sort of agree that, I'd rather it sit here than it's in at the zone.
I always said, because it's an elected board.
Yep.
Right, well, we did do kind of a, you know, overall amendment at, I don't know, what was it, 15 years ago or so?
Yeah, we changed a few.
Where if a use required, if a special permit use required a site plan, and it wasn't already a planning board special permit, it was a ZBA special permit, we changed all of those. We amended that, town meeting approved it, no complaining, we put it all into.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see that being a, an issue. I mean, I think if, if we decide that that's the way we want to go, I don't see that as being a problem with, with making that change.
Yeah, all right. So then the other one, now that you're warmed up, now that you're charged up, is that, oh.
Yeah.
So anyway, I was looking at the electronic vehicle charging stations, and obviously, you need a couple definitions, but I tried to keep them as simple as possible, because we don't need to reinvent the wheel, we just need to be able to say, that's a wheel and that isn't. So what this does is clarify that if somebody's coming in with a new development, right off the bat, if they're interested in doing charging stations, and they do the calcs for whatever the uses require, by this version, they could have up to 10% of the total number as charging stations. That may be too much, we can change that, but at least in terms of the way it would work mechanically, that's how that would work. So that's sub one. Sub two, if you're in an existing lot, you need to run the calcs for what's required, and if, if it's a compliant current parking lot, again, they, they could go 10% of those spaces, or whatever percentage you're comfortable with. Then the third, sub three, is that there are a few multi-use plazas that have gotten shared parking special permits, where there's a parking reduction, a certain percentage based on the requirements in the bylaw. Those are planning board special permits, we know which ones they are, and if somebody comes in from one of those plazas, they're coming back to try and amend the special permit, because that's gonna get more complicated, I think, because they've already got a reduction based on the multiple uses of the site. So however that would pan out, at least mechanically, you got those three subsections that should cover every situation where somebody's gonna say, oh, I want to make that a charging station. So other than that, there's a couple of definitions, and Bob's your uncle.
Yeah, I'm just thinking the shared parking ones could definitely be a problem. I mean, they, they come back to us, so at least we have, we have control over it, so I'm not as worried about it, but I mean, well, actually, I can see, I can see if Stop and Shop ever came back, well, I, based on what's going on down there, I'd say, yeah, you want to put it in, put them out back, because you'd never use the parking anyway, so if you want to put, you want to put them out back, it's fine with me, you know, go ahead and knock yourself out, but you're not taking up any more spaces out front.
Same thing with Coles.
Same thing with Coles, yeah, the ones out behind the L.
It's not like it would necessarily be impossible, I just don't want them to just slide through without anybody seeing anything, and especially where the special permits, and they've been, you know, kind of difficult to work with, so, yeah. Anyway, so again, that's, that's a structure that you can amend up and down with percentages, change if there's some additional requirements for the special permits or whatever, but it seems like that would work, because my concern is that parking's a problem anyway, and I didn't want the, the board and the town to get blindsided by the latest thing that comes down the pike, no pun intended, as long as we're talking auto puns, you know, just because everybody's hot on, on, oh, we gotta have charging stations, that's the biggest thing. Well, that may be, but I don't want us to shoot ourselves in the foot. So, anyway, I, I think this might work.
Yeah. I know nothing else to do during the day, sit there. I just sit there during the day and look at it and just kind of go over it, which puts the brain to work anyway.
All right, that's fine. Anybody have anything else?
Not this time.
I'll let you schedule it.
Yeah, next meeting's the 16th, it's a public hearing. Just so you're aware, as I said earlier, they submitted so much stuff that I actually had four extra sets of the packet for that proposed development on East Main Street, and of course, that's a plan, so as you leave, anybody that just can't resist, can take all or parts of.
Make sure you take the drain before you get off, how much that's gonna be by next Friday.
I don't even want to look. It's been too long.
So that should be it?
Yeah, that should be, that will be interesting, I'm sure. I mean, that, that has been a, that area, certainly along 16, has been an, an interesting, interesting history in the town of Milford.
Former Rob Sham property, so.
And this, this one certainly has gone through a number of iterations.
Casino.
Yeah, out of the casino.
I, what do you mean? The first subdivision, they, they proposed a residential subdivision up there.
Yeah, gone through that. Oh, for this one?
Yeah.
For this property. We may, there may, there may be a crowd here for that, who knows? You never know who shows up or who doesn't, but we may have, we may have some interested residents, which is fine.
Well, it's a permitted use to the extent that we can figure out what it is.
Yeah, well, of course, that's always one of the issues.
Yeah, I mean, it'd be kind of nice to know who it is.
If it is anyone.
Yes.
That, it has happened before where these have melted by the wayside, but that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, unless there's anything else anybody wants to talk about.
Motion, we adjourn?
Motion by Babe to adjourn, do I hear a second? Seconded by Joe. Boy, you're quick on that, see, I know that.
Yes, sir.
Any further discussion, hearing not, all those in favor of adjourned will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous at four, thank you.